Before we go on to item one, the approval of the agenda, I'd like to recommend that in item eight, resolutions. I think I'd like to ask the council if we could table that resolution. It's about House Bill 362, and so that we can have the full council to discuss that item and move forward on it. Any questions on that?
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
All right, then, if you're all open to that, then I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda with deleting item eight at this point, resolutions from the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to item three, Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Anything to discuss? Okay. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda to approve the minutes from the city council meeting of 6:10-15, and a consideration to give an alcohol license to local sent to Perks Espresso and Smoothies located at 520 West Telegraph Street in Washington, Utah.
If there's no discussion, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of 6:10-15 city council meeting, and a local consent for Perks Espresso and Smoothies located for an alcohol license located at 520 West Telegraph Number Two.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion and a second.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
Okay. Those are approved. Item five, road closure, consideration to approve a request to close a portion of Pickley- Prickly Pear Drive from Cerritos Drive to Yucca Lane, August 1, 2015, for a neighborhood block party. Applicant Ann Hall.
So just another year of block party. It went really well last year, a little bit of road closure last year.
Not too many people didn't get too crazy, did they?
Yeah, we ended up mostly on my yard and driveway, but I have the area and so kids around. So there were about 100, total, let me see. And also, I could have a question about possible musician, and it wouldn't, I think I would just want just like a small speaker, not like amps or anything. I just want, I haven't asked any musician. I know a couple of friends who know some that are in town, and I just want to see maybe if anyone's willing to come, if that would be a possibility.
Liz Zappel? Is that Liz Zappel?
No.
My personal opinion is I don't see a problem, especially if it doesn't go late into the evening.
Yeah.
And, of course, if you keep the noise down. So most of your neighbors are going to be there and be a part of it. So those people that normally may be interrupted by that seems to be that they'd be part of that. And so I wouldn't see a problem with it as long as, like you said, you kind of just remember that we're neighbors and that we have to be considerate of each other. And so once, you know, you hit a little later into the evening, it either quiets down or stops.
And I'll be going around to some of the neighbors that I know haven't made it throughout the years and just talking to them now, so make sure it's okay with them, and hopefully get them also.
I think it's a great idea. I was glad to see that it turned out as well as it did last year with no complaints from anyone. I didn't hear of anything. So I think it's a great idea to, our neighborhoods get together and associate with each other and get to know each other. That's super.
Yeah.
So thank you for putting that together up there.
Any other questions or any comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to close a portion of Prickly Pear Drive from Cerritos Drive to Yucca Lane on August 1, 2015, for what sounds like to be a great neighborhood block party.
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second.
Turek, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice night.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you. Item six, preliminary plat, consideration to approve a preliminary plat for the Chateau Meadows, located approximately 2,700 South, 300 East.
Thank you, Mayor. As requested, this is an application for a preliminary plat for the Chateau Meadows subdivision. The applicant is wishing to develop eight lots and the area coverage is 9.8 acres. Location at this particular subdivision, the zoning is residential agricultural half-acre minimum, referred to as the RA half. This proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets subdivision requirements and other city ordinances. Staff reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat. Planning Commission reviewed the request at their June 3, 2015, meeting, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat for the Chateau Meadows subdivision to the city council. And, of course, based on the findings, subject to the conditions. Just make note, the first 11 conditions are standard. Number 12 was an extra one that comes through the Public Works Department, just to make reference to that, that the developers shall provide a letter from the St. George Canal Company accepting the stormwater proposed to discharge into the irrigation canal prior to any construction drawing approval. We just have a little bit of an issue with some stormwater and getting it out of this particular area. Other than that, I think it's a great proposal. There's some bigger lots. I know Councilman Truman's probably happy to see that. And they're actually going above this, so I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have on this proposal.
Knowing where this lot is going to be, I know there's still issues with the irrigation canal ditch along that area and flooding, I think, some of the property owners in Adams Lane subdivision there. I don't know if adding additional stormwater over there is going to further compound that problem of flooding in there.
Well, I'm not sure, but I'm almost, Mike, I don't know if you've talked to Lester, I think they're going to have to put this in a pipe. Isn't that right, down the continuation of 300 there? I think they're going to have to contain that. The rest of it's going to be running through natural tailwater ditches, but, well, Brandy, you're here, isn't that the proposal, is to have a pipe go down that road right next to Adams Lane subdivision? So that should hopefully help alleviate some of that, and the street will also help take some of that water as well, so.
So will they pave both sides of that road down that direction?
I can't remember what the discussion was on that between the two, the engineer and Public Works. So I don't think I'd dare answer that. Do you guys, was there a decision?
There's still discussion.
I guess.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong side. I know that part of it is going to be, you've got Adams Lane subdivision, and then you get this project across the street, and that since Adams already built out, nobody's going to improve that half of the road, so is it only going to be half improved and the other half left of nothing?
That's probably correct. We talked about this in the zone change, I think, and I can't remember what our plan for that was. Again, I'm going to, Mike knows he needs to come up. I'm not going to throw anything out there and put him in behind.
This, the Pheasant Meadows development was done such a long time ago, but...
And this is where they don't have money? They're supposed to bond and...
Yeah, they actually signed a non-opposition to an SID, and the issue we've run into, and we've actually talked over this with the council, the only option we have to is go back and, I guess, force an SID on the Pheasant Meadows residents to get the improvements done on 30 East.
And then I guess it'd be nice to have somebody at least approach that topic, because otherwise it's never going to be done unless the city ends up...
Right, yeah, and we're working that direction. What we want to do is meet with the homeowners, explain to them, and see what kind of feedback we get from them.
Okay.
And then go down the road as an SID for that little improvement area.
Okay. Yeah, if we could do that, just kind of put that on the to-do list, visit with them, appreciate it.
Yep.
And I do remember that discussion. So thanks, Mike.
I think the subdivisions end upside down in your thing the way it got sent in, so hopefully you've kind of figured that out.
Is that a trail that's on the back, coming across the back section here? There's a, I can't tell what...
No, it's not. It's the, it's a 20-foot irrigation easement.
Oh, okay.
Sorry again, it's upside down, but I've rotated mine. If you just be real careful with your iPad, you can turn it without it. You might have to lay it flat if you've got them up.
Well, that was my concerns, if it was a trail, where was the connectivity to any of it?
No, it's an existing that needs to stay, and it will, they're just putting that on there as a note to make sure, and it'll show up on the final plat as well. That's really how they're going to move a lot of the water, hopefully that direction, so.
If there is none, I'd make a motion that we approve a preliminary plat for the Chateau Meadows located approximately 2,700 South, 300 East, with some really nice-sized lots.
I'll second that.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, that's approved. Move on to item seven, public hearings and related ordinances. Item A, public hearing for consideration of adopting a resolution to open and amend the Washington City 2014-2015 fiscal year budget. Kimberly Roush.
So, Mayor and council, this is toward the public hearing, just to finalize this fiscal year that's going to be ending on June 30. The major changes that we needed to make for this budget opening were related to the proposed transfer, the issuance of the loan from the sewer fund in terms of accounting for that, being able to account for the moving of the community center and the golf course into the general fund. And so with that, those resolutions that were passed at the last meeting, we need to, we're basically closing out the funds that were reported separately for those, and the budgets move over into the general fund. And so there's a big consolidation with that, and then a reduction related to actuals, anticipated expenses for capital projects. So the total budget that we have currently for the city is $62 million, and it's being reduced for the year end down to $57,920,248. So at this time, we'll just open it up, I guess, for a public hearing if people have questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We welcome any comment, questions, or concerns about our budget, what we're proposing, if you want to come on up. Three, two, one. I guess if there's not any comment...
Seeing done, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you. That public hearing is closed. We'll move on to item B, consideration to approve a resolution amending the revenues and expenditures of the Washington City 2014-2015 fiscal year budget.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution amending the revenues and expenditures of the, of our 2014-2015 fiscal year budget has been noticed.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, that's approved. We'll move on to item C, public hearing for consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing a 10-year loan from the sewer fund to the general fund to cover prior year's operating losses of the golf course. The proposed terms and conditions of the interfund loan is for a principal amount not to exceed $1 million, for a term not to exceed 10 years, beginning June 30, 2015. Interest rate will be a fixed rate of 2.38%, which is based off the rate of a U.S. Treasury note of a comparable term will be compounded annually. Kimberly Roush.
So, Mayor and council, we've had a couple meetings. So we had our public hearing originally back in May, where the council, where we were looking at doing a direct transfer, and at that time, the council, we just did a public hearing, and then two weeks later, we came back for the council to make a decision on that. And so last council meeting, we, the vote was to issue that as a loan for $1 million and the remaining portion to come out of fund balance within the general fund. So this is to formalize those terms, and with legislative change, it does require an additional public hearing, which is our purpose tonight, for residents to be able to see the actual terms of the loan and the payback period. So I have a summary that's just being displayed for the annual totals. We will actually be making monthly payments in terms of transfers associated with these loans.
As I say, that we fixed an interest rate of 2.38%, correct?
Yes, so we are required to, if the payback term is greater than one year, then we're required to use either the interest rate that's being issued out of the public treasurer's investment fund, or a treasury note, interest earnings of a comparable term, whichever is greater. So the greater of those twos is coming off of the U.S. Treasury note, so.
That seems to be higher than what we earn on our investments, even.
Depending upon, it is in terms of the public treasurer's investment fund, but in terms of the investment that we do through our city treasurer, we earn terms that are, we have some that are up or, you know, in excess of this as well, so.
I think as a whole of our investment, that's pretty close to our portfolio.
To their average, yeah.
Pretty close.
Unless you have any questions?
Any questions?
This is the time we wish we could have set it towards the state investment.
Point oh five.
Again, this is a public hearing. Any of you that would have a question or a comment or a suggestion, we're welcome to. Have you come on up? If not, we'll...
If no comments, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Consideration to approve, item D, consideration to approve the resolution authorizing a 10-year loan from the sewer fund to the general fund. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing a 10-year loan from the sewer fund to the general fund pursuant to the terms outlined just moments ago. 10-year payback not to exceed an interest rate of 2.38%. Not to exceed a 10-year payback.
Thank you. Motion to...
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second.
Turek, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice night.
Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to another public hearing for consideration of adopting an ordinance approving zone change request, Z-15-07, to add an overlay zone of residential rentals, excuse me, short-term to existing multiple-family residential, R3 zoning designation, located approximately 3,800 South Washington Fields Road, applicant Dan Hoops.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, this is actually our first official zone change request for this type of a use through the overlay zone process for residential rental short-term. That just means that the underlying zoning remains, and then the privileges of an overlay zone are draped over the top, so to speak, is the best way to explain that. Now, the area requested is 12.08 acres in size, located approximately, as stated, around 3,800 South Washington Fields Road. This is kind of in the middle of the Andrus property that we know down in this area. The proposed change is for possible future development of a project that could or would allow for the short-term rental, or as we refer to many times, vacation rental subdivision. Recently, the Planning Commission city council approved the two ordinances, one being a CUP for single individuals, and then the overlay for a full development. Staff has reviewed the proposed overlay zone request, finding that it meets the minimum criterion size and would be a good fit for the area. The property is designated in general plan as medium-high density, which is intended to act, as it says in our general plan, as a transitionary between commercial mixed use and medium-density residential developments. Just for your information, on the west border there is the Steeplechase Development. Hasn't worked its way over this far yet. They barely got their Phase One in, and a few homes are being built at Steeplechase Development right next to Treasure Valley. The Planning Commission reviewed the request at their June 3 meeting. They unanimously recommended approval of Z-15-07 for the overlay zone request, adding the residential rental short-term overlay zone to the current existing multifamily residential or R3 zoning designation to the city council, and that's based on the findings that you see in your report. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has on this proposal.
Do we have any more of these online right now that you're aware of?
Well, we're in the middle of another, but it's a PCD amendment in, back in the Sienna Hills. Jack Fisher Homes picked up the Villas, which is just south of that church, the LDS Church on Washington Parkway. They were at the Planning Commission a week ago, so you'll see another one, but that'll be in the form of a PCD amendment, like we did with the Town Homes for Ivory Home. So this is really the only one we've had so far. I don't have another application for entire development. I have had a few people call me looking at the particulars of it, so there might be in the future, but you will in two weeks have another, it's almost like this kind of a change, so.
It's somewhat unusual, we do something that people have an interest in.
That's right. Well, this is, as you're fully aware, this is the hot thing right now in southern Utah. And they're not even planning, and this particular one is not really planning, they just wanted to have that, because they're doing their assisted living business, you know, which is the property closest to Washington Fields Road, and this is the five acres that's left over to the west of that, and they just, but they wanted to put it over all of it because they have considered it as part of their assisted living, because it's in some fourplexes. They want to leave one or two units maybe available to rent to the families that may come see mom and dad, or grandma and grandpa that are living in the development, and they can rent those out on a nightly. So that's why we put it over the whole development. Doesn't hurt to have it on that, so that's kind of the reasoning behind this. Again, they haven't got a particular project, but I think it'll just make the land more valuable if they want to sell it to someone in the future, so.
Thanks, Drew. Any other questions from the council? It's a public hearing. Come on up.
Is this the property that's already under contract, or is this property that has yet to be purchased from the Andrus?
This is the one, there's a sign down there that says Bedford.
Correct.
I think they're already, they've already purchased it, right?
Yeah, Dan Hoops is the applicant. They have, from, to my understanding, they have purchased this, and then the commercial piece that's due east that, right here, they purchased that whole, I think it's around 16 acres, and it's owned by Dan Hoops and his wife. So it's, I don't think it's even a, I think it's a done deal.
So I have their home feature, and I knew that they sold part of the property, but not the rest of it.
That, this is all they've sold, to my recollection.
It was 16 acres.
You just wanted an update, right? You just wanted an FYI, right?
You should have to go visit.
Leanne, we're talking about your property right now.
All right. Sorry.
Come on up. It's a public hearing.
I apologize if I ask questions that's already been answered. I haven't studied it very well.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlotte Ride, Treasure Valley, that's where I live. W-R-I-D-E. Medium-high density, is that for townhouses, apartments, condominiums? What would that be for? And when you say short-term rentals, is that like nightly, weekly, monthly? And, okay.
Short-term, basically, according to our ordinance, is anything under 30 days.
Okay.
So it could be nightly, probably, and most of them are kind of a weekend, nightly. That's kind of the reason the ordinance went in, is to facilitate those types of activities, yes.
Okay, so they could be single dwellings, single-family dwellings, they could be apartments. It depends on what ends up being zoned beyond the MHD.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, all this does is allows them to rent them on a nightly basis, rather than, our other ordinance says they have to be at least 28 days rental.
Yeah, and if it's 30 days or more, we don't pay taxes. If it's less, we have to pay the transient tax.
Correct.
Yes, okay, but nothing's in the plans for development, now you're just rezoning or defining it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's just an overlay zone, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for... Not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Nice and... I'll second that.
Thank you.
And I'll say aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice night.
Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item F, consideration to approve the ordinance, an ordinance approving zone change, Z-15-07, by adding an overlay zone allowing short-term rental, short-term residential rentals.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the ordinance, zone change, Z-15-07, by adding an overlay zone allowing short-term rentals, residential rentals in this zone.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Turek, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice night.
Okay, that's approved. Item G, public hearing for consideration of amending the Washington City Code by amending portions of Title IX zoning regulations to allow mobile food vendors in the commercial and industrial zones, Sections 9-1-6, 9-2, 9-9-2A, 9-10A-2, A9-10B-2-2, 9-10C-2, A09-10D-2, A09-11-2. Have we got enough dashes and dots and ayes, or what?
I'm not sure you did exactly right.
Tara, just copy it off of the... That's okay, man, we're fine. I'm actually surprised that the building's not full with this application on the docket tonight, and at least that all the staff in Washington City, I thought, would be here for this marvelous event. And I am being a bit sarcastic, Mayor, and I apologize, but this has been a while in the making. A lot of people have waited for this night.
Are we going to have a mobile food vendor in the parking lot?
We might need a moment aside, just because this is groundbreaking. I'm glad the paper's here tonight, and we're on TV. Oh, sorry, I just, it's been a while getting this to where we are tonight, so I had to make a little light of it. I've been beat up enough in the last six months, so. Anyway, we are here to propose, as the city, of course, as the applicant on this, to amend our zoning ordinance to allow for mobile food vendors within Washington City. Prior to this, we didn't have any provision to allow such a thing on mobile wheels, so to speak, to just pop up like these do in a parking lot at a particular location, coming to our, you know, even movie in the night, movie in the park, sorry, specials, things such as that. So we're here tonight for that proposal, and bringing it in this form to the city council. We want to amend, of course, the zoning regulations, and by definition, I wrote a full-blown ordinance and had it already, and then my mind caught hold and says, let's just keep this as simple as we can. And we've done this in other parts of our zoning ordinance by, we added a definition and put the restrictions within that definition, which made it so much simpler. And so we're, of course, adding this definition in Chapter One, Section Six, entitled definitions, and it goes as "mobile food vendor." And if I may, I'll just read through. Letter A is "any business that serves food or beverages from a self-contained unit, either motorized or in a trailer on wheels, and conducts all or part of its operations on premises other than its own, and is readily movable without disassembling for transport to another location. The term "mobile food vendor" does not include vending carts or mobile ice cream vendors." Those are something that we're just so accustomed to in our life of having, especially the ice cream truck come through the residential neighborhoods, and this is not to be tagged together to hinder either one of those different uses. Letter B is part of the definition, "no person shall operate a mobile food vendor business without first obtaining a business license," and a site, a site plan approval from the city. Mobile food vendor vehicles, operations in vehicles, sorry. This is where we just had a few minor changes in the last couple days. Operations, I'm still trying to catch up. I still have the wrong one. Let me go down, make sure we have the right definition.
Let me read that second one. I think I have printed out at least a red line.
Yeah, I know that I pulled it up earlier and had it show up right, and now it's not. Yeah, I know that I pulled it up earlier and had it show up right, now it's not for some reason.
That's great, so, so, "Mobile food vendor operate, operations and vehicles shall comply with all applicable local, county, state, and federal requirements relating to the handling and distribution of food, including the Utah Department of Health and Southwest Utah Department of Health. Mobile food vendors shall not have a drive-through, be kept, shall be kept in good operating condition, only operate on private property with written permission, permission from the owner of the property, provide for proper methods of trash disposal and keep the area maintained and in a clean condition, not operate within a one-hundred-foot radius of any public restaurant, within any public restaurant entrance or city-sponsored event selling food, adhere to the city's sign and other applicable ordinances."
Thank you, Mr. Stark, yeah, I just, there's two of them in my iPad and I just pulled up the wrong one, so here is the, here's the one that we just put in and I thank him for reading that. So that'll be the definition that is changed in, in Chapter One of Title IX there and under definitions. Now, the next ones, nine nine two A, ten A two A, ten B two A, ten C two A, ten D two A, we're mending, just to put in, the permitted uses will be the term "mobile food vendor", so we'll just add those as a permitted use in those. Then coming down, going into the, I also had the inspiration, if we're gonna let them in the commercial, we might as well carry forth and let them be in the industrial areas in case they want to take them to those particular businesses as well. So with that, that is actually, goes to the, Chapter Eleven, which is industrial, and that will fall under Chapter Two, letter D, which is titled "List of Uses", and that's where our matrix is, and so that's why you see in, in the ordinance that we brought out the box and added "mobile food vendor", and in an I-one, and an I-two, and a BP, they're all permitted. So I think that pretty much covers what we're trying to do tonight with the ordinance. The Planning Commission reviewed it at their June third meeting, they unanimously recommended approval of the change. I won't read them all again, I think we're no, to the city council, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that the council might have. I will let you know, I think we talked about it in your work session, we're gonna make a separate application just for these and the business license. That'll state these particular items as part of this B, here's the things that they're gonna check and say, yes, I understand that, I understand that. And all those items that are in that letter B on the definitions, they will actually physically check a box saying they, they understand that as part of their, their business license application.
Have we determined what, if anything, is gonna cost for them to fill out the application, have it approved?
It'll be a standard business license application like any other business would. So I'm not sure it's based on some different items, but I think it's the fifty dollars a year. But the biggest thing that we'll have to have is for them is, under that business license application, wherever they're gonna show up, they need to put it in, here's the owner's signature, here's the owner, and if they change it, they'll need to come in and, and give us a new slip that says that. So in case we have an issue, that someone shows up without the owner's permission, we can, you just violated your, your business license and, and you're being, you know, kind of a rogue food vendor, and so we may have to pull your business license, so.
Now, these can be on city property then, like the parks?
They will, and, and, well, only by, I'm glad Denise said that, it'll only be by invitation of a special event. Okay, they won't be able just to come randomly on our city property, no, and we're not gonna let somebody, just if somebody comes and says, hey, I wanna show up at, at this park as part of my route, we're not gonna offer that for people. But if it's a special event sponsored by the city, Cotton Day's, movie in the park, if it's, as long as it's a sanctioned event by us, we'll let them come as long as they have their business license. I hope that answers that question, I didn't mislead that, thanks Denise.
How do we collect the sales tax on that? Now that we've licensed them, we know they're gonna be at a certain place, is that gonna help us in any way to get?
Well, part of their business application, they have to give us their license, and we kind of talked, go ahead.
Yeah, what they'll have to do, from our understanding, is they've probably got a primary license, but they'll have to list Washington City as an outlet on that license. And then what we'll do is, as they, once the license is issued, we'll usually wait a quarter because they usually file quarterly, and then we'll just verify. We don't anticipate there'll be a large number of applicants on these, maybe half a dozen, and so it'll be easy for us to follow through. And I know they're, they're, they're fine doing that too, and they keep reminding us, if we would allow them, we'd be collecting something as well. But yes, we will verify that, that they properly apply to that.
Thanks, Drew. Any other questions, gentlemen? Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody wanna list your favorite mobile vendor, come on up, yeah.
It just entered my mind, I'm Charlotte Ride from Treasure Valley. I see these lunch wagons come at construction sites, how would this affect them? I'm just curious, that, does that make sense, my question?
The way I read the notes, it said it's not gonna affect those kind of vendors, it's not meant to apply to them for the construction sites.
The mobile catering trucks are handled as a solicitation type of, so they have to come and get a solicitor's license from us to go to each individual one. So it's licensed in a completely different way.
What about, like sporting events, Little League, that type of stuff?
They would have to have an invitation and have approval from the council to be able to go to those events. So it's not like they can just show up at any of them, it would have to be something that they've gotten their special event permit from you guys. Yeah, residential ones, when the, when the mobile trucks go in, they, into residential, like your ice cream trucks and your vendor type, right. They have to have a, we have to have a background check on them and that kind of a thing, going into residential areas, so.
Thank you Denise, thank you.
Well, in construction sites, where it's public.
They have to have a special license, it's called a solicitor's license, for them to be able to go into residential areas. So it's handled completely diff, well, yeah. They still have to have approval from the health department, those type of things, but for them to go, actually go sit up and locate on a, on a parcel of ground, it's, your vendor.
Like the ice cream trucks, that we were thinking, like, yeah?
It's the same thing.
It's the same principle, it's the same principle.
Yeah, we.
Right, they have to get a solicitation permit.
And if you could get me the name, because I don't really have any of those licensed right now, so I'd appreciate a name if you could get me one.
Yeah, I can see it, it was, it appeared that they come under the same definition, it's a mobile thing, they're selling food, but this is, they're not going to a specific location at a designated time and inviting people to come. They're just going job site to job site, more soliciting, sales and setting up, saying, I'm gonna be in this parking lot from four to eight to come and buy some of our food. So it's a little different, but it's a lot the same as well.
And they're on public property, not on private?
Well, usually they go into the private developments, the developer owns the construction site, they go onto the construction site, sell their, sell their food, people get sick or don't get sick.
The mobile food vendor trucks that they're talking about'll go into like commercial areas. Not residential.
Yeah, that's, this ordinance is basically just dealing with commercial and industrial only, so they are not allowed to go into residential areas, they're not approved to go into residential areas, just commercial and industrial.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? No, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So made, mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to, oh, I need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Turek, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice and aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is approved and be closed, and we'll move on to item H, consideration to approve an ordinance amending the Washington City Code Title IX zoning regulations to allow mobile food vendors in certain areas within the commercial and industrial zones.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the ordinance amending the Washington City Code Title IX zoning regulations to allow mobile food vendors in certain areas within the commercial industrial zones that have been listed.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Nice and aye.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
Okay, that's approved. Move on to item nine, net metering agreement, consideration to approve an addendum to the Washington City new, is it newer net metering agreement, declaring application eligible for granting an exception.
I think it's probably for me, Kelly and I worked on this, I think Kelly sent a summary of what that, what the purpose of this was, and in the summation, Burton Lumber, on their, on their site, where they do their lumber business, they wanted to put, they wanted to take advantage or at least try to apply for, to be eligible for this net metering policy and program, and they wanted to put a solar, some solar panels to try to collect some of their energy. The concern that they had was, which would have been just, would have been fine, the concern they had is that technically they're leasing from themselves. There's two entities, all owned, but kind of owned and run by the same groups, one leases to Burton, so the Stoli Company leases the building and the, and the land to Burton, although they're in effect kind of just same entity, same known, and our net metering policy has one line in it, in one subsection, it says, this shall not apply, or not eligible for rental units. And I think as Kelly worked on this, the net metering policy, that was really intended to deal with residential areas where somebody isn't just coming up and putting up solar panels and then try, and somehow taking advantage of that, where the net metering policy is really to, to try to be individually applied, either businesses or for homeowners. Having said that, it did, that is how it read, and they were, and they're, Burton was concerned that at some point down the line, five years down the line, someone was gonna step in and say, well, wait a second, you're leasing that company, you shouldn't be entitled to that, and they're gonna pull the rug out from under it or try to have the city enforce it. So having said that, rather, and we didn't really want to amend the entire ordinance, because that's a long process just to, to deal with that. It seemed like it was a better approach, laid out all the facts, here are the specific facts of the case in, in general, same company, same group principles kind of on both businesses. It's an industrial business that we're dealing with, and both of them, both of the parties, the landowner as well as the, the lesssee of the property, will have to be responsible under our net metering policy for whatever responsibility issues they have. And based on all those things, staff recommended that with those, that the council, one of, one of the two, grant an exception to that rental unit issue or simply recognize what staff feels is, that, that's really intent and the interpretation of the stat, of our ordinance was that, in such a circumstance, it should be allowed. Either way, we've given kind of the option either way for the city council to say, yeah, I think staff's right, that makes sense, this is what the policy's for, go ahead and let them go. Probably more work than we wanted to do on it, but.
What would be the concern of, even if it was a rental, a residential rental, I don't understand what the concern, why wouldn't we just strike all, I mean, the rental portion clear out completely?
I don't know, Roger, Roger may have a better feel for it, I don't know.
Well, I, I think just the whole, I'm sure the intent, and I don't know if this is exactly what was the, the direction by Kelly when, when he wrote that, but I think, and I think some of this actually came from some model ordinance stuff out there. It's just the whole landlord lesssee issue, you just avoid, you just avoid that whole issue altogether. And, and again, not anticipating these commercial uses, but we think we can handle these through exceptions, this is, because we are actually very supportive of this. But I'm, I'm sure that that was the, that was the reason, is just because of that relationship between a landlord tenant issue.
Yeah, and on that relationship, it almost seemed like the land, the tenant doesn't have authority, this would be a fixture to the home.
Correct.
They don't have authority to put a fixture on the home without the landlord's consent, so you avoid all those issues, and landlord coming in saying it's coming back out.
That's a good point, too.
You know, it's interesting.
The actual homeowner, the actual owner of the land is the one making the application, owns that entitlement.
Which, which many of you will remember, some time ago landlords forbade satellite dishes. And it required actually some court action and case law that said, no, that's, and who knows, maybe this'll go that direction as well, as renewable energy becomes part of that issue. But I stated probably better, that's, I think the main reason is right there.
I actually think lobbyists were the ones that drove that, but yeah, sure. So I think that's why Kelly had initially put it in there, I think it was a good purpose for it, I don't think this was it, that we wouldn't have one of our, especially one of our good businesses, established businesses, who are, nobody would even know that that relationship existed, given the fact that they have the same principles, and they kind of offered that on their own, they were concerned about it. So we thought this was the easiest way to deal with it, and if it comes up again, now we have this kind of a standard for it and it can't be challenged later. Or, you know, inquisitive attorneys won't be staying up late at night worrying that this will happen at some point.
It's because Burton's son is an attorney that owns the business, so. I don't, I don't have any problems with it, I think it's a good idea to work with them, cooperate with them.
Do you wanna make a motion on that, Ken?
And so if we approve, and if we approve the agreement, then just authorize the mayor to go ahead and sign it on behalf of the city, that's great.
I'll make a motion, we approve an addendum to Washington City net metering agreement, declaring application eligible for granting an exception.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second.
Nice and aye.
Truman, aye.
Turek, aye.
All right, that's approved. Move on to report from your signed committees, anybody have anything? Okay. City manager report?
Oh, okay, now I'm going to, I was faster than I thought. I just wanna touch on a couple of projects that the council might have an interest in, and one of them I'm gonna pull up, give you some. One of them is the Sullivan, Sullivan Park, just to give you a few shots of the Sullivan Park, the soccer fields, this is the big wall there on that north side of the park that they're getting ready to, to build there. Let's see, I gotta go the right direction here. This is the foundation with the, for the restrooms. I think the other stuff we've got here is mostly irrigation. As you know, most of the major grading was done sometime back as part of our floodplain application, they've gone in and done some additional grading, but not in any way that, that impacted our, our permit and what we've done before. So I just wanted to, we're on schedule with the park, it doesn't look like, as you drive past, because it's so far back, it's hard to see if anything is really going on there, but they're on schedule and, so that's coming along really well. And maybe when it cools down a little bit, we can, I'll wander out there and take a look at it. With regards to Public Works, thirty-six fifty, that's been one of our highlighted, the major roads out there in the fields, particularly as we connect people to the airport and to the Southern Parkway. We've been working, Public Works have been working with the couple of families out there with regards to getting that widened and improved, and I think we're very close, maybe within a week or two of bidding out that, that project. Appreciate some of the families and property owners in that area that have worked so well with us on that. And of course, that'll tie in very well because the work continues to progress exceptionally well on that other piece of the Southern Parkway that connects Warner Valley to the Washington Dam Road, which I think is still on schedule for late fall, September, so early fall. So we should see more and more traffic on that particular area. Another big project that we've been working on has been our water line from basically the landfill road up to the north side of I fifteen, up to our tanks on the, on the hill there. And that's, if you can kind of comprehend what a long pipe that is, but they've done a great job and they're, we're probably within a couple of weeks of, well, we're working on the pump station right now. So the, once the pump station is completed, then the pipe's basically laid at this point, working on pump station, and then we'll get it all cleaned up and start to energize that, that line. And, and that'll be a great benefit because we can then take conservancy water over to the north side of I fifteen for those tanks as well, so. And then I wanted to just point out this with some statistics that. So, and then, I wanted to just point out this with some statistics that, or things that the council might find interesting. Of course, with the hot temperatures we've had, you may have a question about power and electricity, and I wanted to give you a couple of ideas. So, talking about our generation plant, and of course, we only, we run our generation plants when we have a better opportunity to run our plants versus the market. So, I wanted to give you a couple of numbers here. When I say strike price, a strike price is the price that we strike the generators. So, right now, our current strike price out at our generation plant is about $68.50 a megawatt, and the market price is currently sitting at $58 a megawatt, so that's why we don't strike. And part of the big component of our strike price is our gas contracts, because there's a gas, they're gas-ran generators. However, on July fourth, July first, our gas contract changes, and also traditionally on the third quarter of each year across the nation, market prices are at their highest. So, July, August, and September, usually market prices are the highest. So, forecasting our new strike price will go to $43.50 come July first, and we're right now forecasting in the market about $70.80 market price. So, I know there's been a lot of times that they've all sit down and said, "Are we running those things? Are we doing anything with those things?" This is when these things make bank with regard to our ability to control market exposure on our power. Now, the other good thing I would add to that, though, is Washington City did, did secure, we did secure a market product for the summer. It doesn't fill all of our peak needs, but, so we'll do generation, we're gonna run pretty heavy with our generation, but we also secured, this was several months ago, we won't find this again, a $39 market price, that we were able to secure a portion of our load for $39 a megawatt as well. So, I thought you might be interested in those numbers. If you get a chance after July, maybe take a trip over to the generation plant and see those, that facility running like we built it to do, and it's gonna be a very positive thing for the community. Other than that, Mayor, unless there's some questions?
Any questions?
I just had one on preventative maintenance, thunderstorms are coming in two or three weeks. Is everything looking good there?
Well, thank you, Councilman. We've actually had a couple of meetings, and I'm assuming you're talking about stormwater and those type of things, okay. So, we've actually had several meetings under the direction of our Emergency Services Director, Chief Keith, we've had Public Works involved as well as others. We do have a couple of projects, so our window that we were looking at is trying to be vigilant during maybe around a July first through a mid-October period, and, you know, hopefully it won't be that long. But we do have a couple of projects that won't be completed quite at July first. We've got our debris, I'll call them the debris basins or the catch basins up here along the borrow strip between the frontage road of Buena Vista and I-15. We've connected a pipe across there, so we get any sheeting like we did last year that come out of the hills up there and then come across Buena Vista, and then they catch that borrow pit and come down toward Main Street. Of course, we have a series, we're completing our construction, and part of the delay on that has been the moving of the utilities in that area. But we have a series of three or four catch basins, this whole purpose is to catch debris, because of course debris hits our storm system and then clogs it up and it overflows, and so it catches it, drops it, and it also takes the velocity and the power out of the runoff. And then, of course, we've got some stuff that we've, we've done down here on Main Street. There is a transitional period we'll find on Brio, and we've been addressing that. So, Brio, the development up at the end of Main Street, has a fairly extensive basin that they're putting in. It won't be completed for a little time yet, but we have been working with them on interim plans with regards to that because we won't let that one just stay exposed. And then, not to mention the fact that our Public Works Streets and others, because of this window, they've been cleaning storm drains, they've been clearing off debris, making sure that our system works as optimal as it possibly can during these. But we'll keep our fingers crossed, we know there are parts of our city that probably won't be impacted again, that's the one we put all the money in, and we'll, it'll move two blocks down the road, and so...
Has anything happened at Turner's, like, for that?
We, I don't know if there's an update on that, but we're, no, no, we're still, they've had, they've had the easement, we're just waiting for a signature on the easement.
But they could, they could build the berm up if...
They did build, you did, you did, did you do anything on the berm? I thought you were gonna do some...
Yeah, we did one last year, but we didn't actually do it.
Okay. So, we're waiting for the easement, which we've been assured that they will sign, but we've yet to see it.
All right, if not, we'll move on to item twelve, adjournment. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Thanks.
Nice, nigh.
Truman, aye. Turek, aye.
All right, thank you all for coming.